Good evening and welcome to our work session, business meeting of October 9th, 2025.
Hello, hello.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to fall. Have your jackets on tonight. I'm going to open it up to public comment on any of the listed agenda items. Not seeing anybody waiting to speak. I'm going to move to the consent agenda. Mr. Oliverio.
Resolve to approve the consent agenda items two through 10 as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Good evening.
Hi.
The agenda was denied approval of the minutes of the last meeting.
Maureen, is that on?
Can you begin by introducing yourself, please?
Hi, I'm Maureen Bellino. I'm the district clerk.
It's not on. Is it on, Dan?
Is it on, Dan? Yes.
Okay.
The consent agenda tonight includes approval of the previous meeting minutes. We're approving additional or unpaid hours for two staff members. We're approving additions to the 25-26 clubs and advisors. That would be Carrie Carroll, who's the co-advisor for the high school freshman foundations program. An updated 25-26 substitute listings, CSE/CPSE placements, amending the resolution for the driver education classroom teacher rate of pay, approving a contract change order proposal from Field Turf USA, which was referencing a chain link fence and gate, amending in-service credits for two staff members, and approving the contract with Blue Path Service Dogs for Mason.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The resolutions pass. We are going to move into the presentations and we are going to begin with middle school, opening of schools from the middle school.
So we'd like to invite up Mr. Travis McCarty and Ms. Jamie Zeca. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Travis McCarty and I have the privilege of being the principal of Putnam Valley Middle School. And I'm here with my assistant principal, Ms. Jamie Zeca, and I'd like to welcome you all to our middle school opening of schools for our 25-26 school year. And as Dr. Luft had mentioned in previous meetings, our focus this year is on resilience. So we're going to talk a little bit about resilience throughout our presentation this evening. So we're going to start off with some fresh faces in the building and some veteran students amongst our school. So we always like to post some photos of our first day of school. As you can see, we have a few students up here who range from eighth grade all the way down to fifth grade and some siblings as well as they walk into the building. So always those first day photos are great to see. Kids coming off backpacks, coming off buses with their backpacks and very smiling and ready to go and learn about our building and explore the many choices that they have of our middle school. So before we get into the new school year, we always like to review a little bit about last school year. And there are a number of events that occur, some that are annual, some that were new to last year. So we have our student government elections. Our main stage is game show presentation, which is highlighted up here in the corner. They were actually here today as well for our middle schoolers. Our fifth and sixth had an assembly along with our seventh and eighth. We had our middle school drama last year, School of Rock, which actually had four shows over the course of the weekend, the most we've ever done in one weekend event, and it was well attended on all four days. Our student-staff volleyball game in Olympics, always something that our eighth-grade students look forward to, especially with our volleyball games and the Olympics involving all of our students in grades five through eight. Our band and chorus concerts, of course, the Halloween Bash, which will be coming up very soon, in a couple of weeks, probably three weeks or so. We had our Spring Fling, our art, music, tech, and talent show, extremely well attended. Thank you to our PTA with our Minute to Win it event at the end of the school year. Parent workshops put on by our school counselors. Our career fair, which continues to grow, extremely well attended, and you'll see a photo here of our students at one of the booths. That's actually Mr. Polo, and he talked about being a real estate agent right there. And we had our National Junior Honor Society induction, of course, our moving up ceremony. And a number of trips that continue to grow at our middle school. We did have our sixth graders already attend our TOEC trip. We had our trip to Lake Compounds in Washington, DC for our eighth graders. Last year was a first for us for seventh grade with Extreme Play Adventure Park. Our sixth graders went to Town Park in Medieval Times, fifth grade to bounce. And then we have our music events, additional music events, our junior high all-county seventh and eighth grade band and chorus students, elementary all-county, which includes our fifth and sixth grade band and chorus students, NISMAs, solo festival, band and chorus students in grades five through eight. And last year, this was pretty cool, our eighth grade band students were able to perform and go to Six Flags in New Jersey. Thank you to Mr. Soprano for putting that together and our education foundation for helping to fund that event. I hope our eighth graders get an opportunity to do that again this year. And you're going to hear more about our International Baccalaureate Middle Years Program, but we are now an IB world school that offers the middle years program. We were authorized in June of 2025, and this was quite a process. I'm going to let Ms. Tricalla talk more to this, but it's very exciting as a step in the right direction with our authorization. And then eventually down the line, they will come in and review our progress. So I did want to look back on our New York State assessments and our scores. I know Dr. Podesta spoke a little bit about elementary scores, and in doing so, she compared Putnam Valley to Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs as well as Southern BOCs. So I figured I'd do the same. So here you can see our ELA scores from last June, and you'll see if you look in these green boxes, our fifth grade was in the 69th percentile, Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs was at the 63rd percentile, and Southern BOCs at 72%. Sixth grade at 82%, and what I mean by proficiency, those that scored levels three and four. So they were at 82%. Northern Westchester BOCs at 55% and Southern BOCs at 64%. Seventh grade at 65%, Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs at 55% and Southern BOCs at 65%. And finally, eighth grade at 68%, Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs at 60% and Southern BOCs at 68%. So I kind of have this, as Dr. Podesta showed it, in chart form. So you can see here visually where we are compared. So this would be Putnam Valley here, and this is five, six, seven, eight. This is Northern Westchester BOCs, and that's schools in the Northern Westchester BOCs, and this is Southern BOCs. So as you can see, you compare the red to the red to the red, the yellow, the green, and the blue across the board. And then we jump to math. In looking at our fifth grade math, we were in the 70th percentile, Putnam Northern Westchester Schools in the 61st percentile, and then Southern at the 70th percentile. Sixth grade, we have here at 86 percentile, we have Northern at 60 percentile, and then Southern at 67. We have seventh grade at the 73rd percentile, we have Northern at 65th percentile, and then Southern at 71st percentile. And then in eighth grade math, and I'll talk more about this, we were in the 53rd percentile, Northern Westchester at 58th percentile, and then Southern at 60th percentile. But please keep in mind, our Algebra I students do not take the eighth grade math assessment. So our 52 students actually had 100% passing rate with our class average of 84.4. So I have to tell you, there are two sections of math here, and our teacher, Ms. Mave, did a tremendous job in preparing our students. Again, 100% passing rate with a class average of 84% is outstanding. So if you also look at these numbers, this will show you in fifth grade, we had 118 students take that exam, 84 in sixth, 90 in seventh, and only 43 students in eighth grade, which is a small number. And here, we just wanted to show, again, you compare the red to the red, these columns, sixth grade continues to show that strength in math, and you compare those columns, and then green and blue. So I just wanted to break it down. I know it's a little bit boring talking about numbers, but I wanted to give you the numbers so that you could compare the charts along the way as well. And of course, we don't just offer ELA math, but we also have the Science State Assessment in the middle school. So we have our numbers here for science as well, and our fifth graders take this exam. And just to give you a little bit of background information, this measures the acquisition of science in grades three, four, and five. So our third graders continue to grow into fourth graders, continue to grow into fifth graders, and then they take a culminating exam in fifth grade, at the end of fifth grade. So this measures their acquisition of science knowledge from grades three, four, and five. So showing you the numbers here, in grade five, 113 students took the exam, and our proficiency was at 52%. Now, Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs proficiency was at 51%, and then Southern was at 63%. And when we look at eighth grade, please keep in mind, this measures the growth of our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, so the acquisition of science in those three grades. 87 students took that exam as eighth graders, and we had 62% proficiency, 53% Northern Westchester BOCs schools, and then 60% in Southern. And this is just a few of our students working on science activities to start the school And this shows you in chart form, or graph form, I should say. So when we talk about resiliency and taking a look at data and how we grow from results, we constantly reflect, as our IB model shows, we take risks and we reflect on the choices that we make, and we always are open-minded to change. So in ELA, some of the materials that we use, in addition to professional development opportunities that are offered monthly, we have our ready workbook materials, our worldly-wise vocabulary, and then alignment through department meetings. One of the unique features of the middle school that a lot of people don't know is our teams meet every day. So our grade level teams in fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade meet for 40 minutes together every day, and that's by content areas as teams. The math department teachers can work on math, the ELA department teachers work on ELA, science on science and math on math. And Ms. Zeca and I get the opportunity to come in once a week, and we're kind of on a three-week cycle. When we come in for professional meetings, we talk about calendar events, we touch base with teams, we talk about concerns that they might have, some initiatives that are coming up. And then we come in the next week and we talk about data, and we look at our iReady data, we take a look at our student test scores. And then we have what's called student conversation meetings with our clinicians, where we focus on our students and their social-emotional needs as well as their academic needs. So we are constantly in touch with our teachers through administration and clinical meetings as well. In the area of math, we are now using Eureka Math in grades five through eight, and we've seen some growth in our math scores, not just through Eureka Math, but through the skills of our math teachers and the hard work that they're doing. And then we use EMATH in our Math 7A and our Algebra I curriculum. And then, of course, as I spoke, alignment through those department meetings. Oops. And then with social studies, Ms. Zeca and I have actually started to talk about writing expectations and curriculum across content areas and mirroring those same expectations that we have in ELA classes, in our social studies classes, as well as in our science classes. And I didn't want to skip out on science. We've used Science 21 now for a number of years. We are finding that as a supplementary piece, Science 21 is great, but we also added this year something called Measuring Up in Fifth Grade, which provides more graphs and charts and data, so that our students are looking at that and then coming up with a claim and supporting it. So we're looking forward to seeing how Measuring Up aligns to our New York State science assessments. And it was actually good feedback from our department, which is why we went in that direction. And then, of course, I didn't want to leave out world language with our SOMOS curriculum in seventh and eighth grade and our Vamos curriculum in sixth grade. And of course, being that we have a small world language department, our two teachers actually mirror one another day by day. And now I'm going to transition to Ms. Zeca, who's going to talk a little bit about our 2025-2026 school year. And if you take a look at the happy faces up there, actually, all these photos are taken from our website under our Google Slides right on our homepage. So what I really love about this, and I'll talk about it at the end, is you can see a timeline of events for our whole year just by clicking on that Google Photos page. And I know I talk year after year after year, but here's some of our students out on our brand-new turf. How beautiful did that come out? Our students here in our Performing Arts Center on our Opening Day Community Meeting. Here's one of our students at TOEC that our sixth grade went to. And these are some opening week get-to-know-you activities, more of our community meeting photos, and this is a picture from one of our fifth grade classes. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Zeca, who's going to talk a little bit about a successful opening.
Good evening, everyone. So far, we've had a really successful opening, and I just wanted to say that the best thing about working with our middle schoolers is watching their evolution from being nine-to-ten-year-olds and really on their journey to 13-, 14-year-olds. It is an incredible journey. They learn a lot, and part of what we do is support our students. And I will say that we have so many adults who are here, and when I say here, in our building, that support our kids, and they nurture them along their journey. So these are some of the events that we've had thus far. Part of our yearly meet is with fifth grade parents. We want to make sure that they feel comfortable with their student coming into our building, and we do an orientation. We definitely have this staggered start so that fifth and sixth graders can come into the building first. It is a big step for sixth graders to come into the building and learn their locker combinations. We've already had our Washington, DC Parents Info Night, and of course, we've kicked off our first grade level with going to TOEC. There is one difference with TOEC this year. I've written for the same grants for the past three years, and that came out of building steering, and I've had lots of help from teachers and from parents writing the grant. This year, the major difference was they wouldn't cover the cost of their lunch. So we have an awesome kitchen staff who literally, when parents got their forms, they were able to pick the lunch that their child wanted to eat that day, and our kitchen staff was able to accommodate all of our kids in that way. This year, they do have a new program for sixth grade, which is Forest Ecology, which is a little bit different than what the other students are doing. And fifth, seventh, and eighth at this point for the past three years have been the same events. And the nice thing about it is kids can go from fifth grade through eighth grade and not do the same program over and over again and still have that same enjoyment that they do when they're at TOEC. So we look forward to continuing a relationship with them, continuing looking for grants monies to make sure that they're funded, and I look forward to looking at the pictures and hearing all of the feedback that students have when they come back from TOEC. We've also had our two back-to-school nights, and similar to the staggered start, we had a fifth grade, sixth grade night, and we had a seventh grade, eighth grade night. So some of the people who support our students on a daily basis in classrooms and also individually are our clinical staff. One of the models that we use with our school counselors is called the ASCA, which is the American School Counselor Association. They have a framework that kind of guides the work that our school counselors do with our students. And we use a program called Character Strong, which is the program where when our guidance counselors are working with kids, they specifically pick out topics to work with our students, things like social-emotional intelligence, self-awareness, how to relationship build, how to work through relationships and friendships, and really talk about their overall well-being. This year, our model looks a little bit different in fifth and sixth grade. So for our fifth grade, we're still using our SEL class as an encore. So every six weeks, our students switch in their encores, and one of the selections is the SEL. And they still focus on all of those things that our school counselors focus on. They still, they can modify topics based on things that are going on with our students, but it is more of a school counselor running that six-week program, which is a little bit different than our sixth grade model this year, which is innovation and design. Through that lens, we're looking at not only meeting some of our IB expectations, but also social-emotional learning. So it's kind of like a combo of both, and we have staff that are really encouraging some creativity and critical thinking skills as well as hands-on projects and collaboration. Sixth grade, for our SEL model, does a lot of collaborative work, learning about communication, how to work well with others. So here are some of the highlights for seventh and eighth grade, because we never want to make sure, or we actually do want to make sure that we don't drop anybody, we want to make sure everyone feels like they're supported, we want to make sure that everyone's touching base with our school counselors. And as our students get older, the model changes a little bit. Sometimes it is counselors going into the classroom and talking with our students, whole class on specific topics. But we also have a nice rotation, where students are able to work in small groups, in groups of four or five, and our counselors are kind of talking with them one-on-one for high school. But the group dynamic is really awesome for our students because they're hearing from others, they're still building those collaborative and communicative skills, and our guidance counselors run them through different scenarios, different topics. And one topic that will always come up during SEL is empathy, and how we recognize empathy, how we build empathy with one another, and how our students build empathy. And from our fifth grade to our eighth grade transition, you do see that process changing. So we want to make sure that not only are they communicative, but that empathy is also built as well. So I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. McCarty, because we have some special guest stars here.
Thank you, Ms. Zeca. So we did, we know that every year we talk a little bit about that transition to middle school. So we thought it would be a wonderful opportunity this school year to invite some of our fifth graders who have been in school for about six weeks to talk about their new experiences in the middle school and what it was like transitioning from the elementary school and weighing some of those differences. And they're not going to speak just on behalf of what has gone well thus far, but some of the challenges that they see as well. And then at the other end, we've invited some of our eighth graders to share some advice that they would give our fifth graders. So our fifth graders are coming through for four years, our eighth graders are in their last year of middle school, and they're going to give some advice to our fifth graders and, of course, the rest of our building on their journey. So I do want to start off with Michael Binofo. Michael, come on up.
So I've learned that the middle school is different from the elementary school because you get to walk by yourself and the food is way better. One goal I have for myself in middle school is to be better at science and learn the way around the building. The subject that I'm enjoying most so far is social studies because I love to learn about the world. And the subject that challenged me the most so far is math because we're learning a lot at one time. And one thing I want to keep working on is getting better grade, getting a better grade in science and learning more songs in band.
By the way, I did not ask Michael to put that Aaron Judge up there, but that is near and dear to my heart. Thank you, Michael. Tremendous. I don't know who we're rooting for now that the Yankees lost, but any other team will be okay. At this time, I would like to invite up Celeste LeBee. Come on up, Celeste.
I have learned that middle school is different from elementary school because you change classrooms and there's a bell. One goal that I have for myself in middle school is to do my homework early, then I can play with my friends. The subject that I enjoy the most so far is chorus because I love to sing. The subject that challenged me the most is science because you have to do tests in the end of the year. One thing I keep working is typing stories because I want to become an author for my hobby so I can write horror stories.
Next up, we have Sophia Castro. Come on up, Sophia.
I have learned that middle school is different from elementary school because you have bells for periods and have vending machines. One goal that I have for myself in middle school is to work on math and reading. The subject I'm going to, the subject I'm enjoying the most so far is chorus and band because I love music and love playing instruments. It's my favorite thing to do when I'm bored. The subject that challenged me the most is science because when we're learning, because we're learning new things this year. One thing I want to keep working on is ELA because I'm a little stuck on vocabulary and reading.
And by the way, she's extremely creative in textiles and design. I got to see some of her products so far, and they are outstanding. So I'm hopeful that those, some of these fifth graders are really enjoying textiles and design as well. Next up, we're going to jump to our eighth grade, and we're going to start off with Erin Killian. Come on up, Erin.
Hi, my name is Erin Killian. One goal I have for this school year is
One goal I have for this school year is to get higher on a roll for each quarter. Honestly, middle school has taught me, like, to be careful who you trust, because it's a really, like, it's an age where people, you can't, you don't know who you are yet. Like, it's very difficult. Honestly, if I could go back and give my fifth grade self-advice, I would say, don't worry about, like, little things you can't control, like, it doesn't matter that much, honestly. The best part of my middle school experience was the people I met along the way, who make my life just, like, so much better. Honestly, I think PVMS means, like, much more than me, than I thought it, like, really would.
Thank you, Erin. Next up, we have Sophia Kennedy. Come on up, Sophia.
Hello, my name is Sophia Kennedy, and one goal I have for school this year is to make high honor roll. Middle school has taught me to be responsible and have accountability. If I could go back and give my fifth grade self-advice, I would say to listen to your teachers and have fun. The best part of middle school, my best part of middle school experience was making all of my friends. PV means to me a kind, open-armed community that I feel safe and comfortable in, and where I can express myself and make new friends.
Thank you, Sophia. And next, we have James Curran. Come on up, James.
Hello, I'm James, hello, I'm James Curran. I'm in the eighth grade. One goal I have for this year is to get suit in the month. The middle school has taught me to be more efficient while doing my work. If I was to give my fifth grade self-advice, it would be to get, to get less mad at myself if I get a question wrong, and more focused on what I did wrong, so I could do it better. The best part of the middle school experience was making new friends and learning from others. PV means to me a good spot to make new friends and a good place to learn. The teachers here are great.
Thank you, James. And next up, we have Lea Cron. Come on up, Lea.
One goal I have for this school year is achieving high honor roll for every quarter. Middle school taught me that you have to be careful about who you open up to. Not everyone is this, as they seem on the inside, and realizing that usually takes some time. Keep your true friends close, because you'll need them. If I could go back and give my fifth grade self-advice, I would say, take advantage of your free time, but still rest when you need to. Don't wait until the last moment to finish work, but your schedule will also get more packed with time. Just set aside time for work and stick with that time. So, any fifth graders, if you have a packed schedule like me, please, relax, but just also, please do your work as well. The best part of my middle school experience was receiving a test back and getting a good score, especially if that was a test I had to study for. I get home late on most nights, so knowing that staying up late for studying was worth it eases some of my pain. PV means more to me than I ever thought it would when I first walked through the doors to the step of my life. I've made friends here that I'll keep and remember forever, and I've learned a lot through experiences, some good and some bad. What I've learned will stay with me, as will memories from this chapter that will soon be my past.
Thank you, Lea. And by the way, congratulations, Lea is our eighth grade class president as well.
Well, Travis, before you go on, thank you to the students for coming and to you for inviting them. It is so important for us to hear your voices and to hear your advice. Most of that advice, things that I could use, so it's not, it's not just for fifth graders or eighth graders. So, thank you so much for coming, and we appreciate your sharing with us. Well, thank you.
And by the way, it takes a lot of courage to come up at this mic and speak to the community and the public, and I say this every year, they're voices of angels. When our children speak, and we listen, and we take their feedback, it's vital, and they have so much to say. I mean, if you go around the lunchroom and you speak to them, you walk into an academic study, you walk into a classroom, they are focused, and they also ask you the most unique questions, and they have some of the most unique thoughts that you'll ever hear. So, we really appreciate their voice and continue to make an impact on the world around you. We greatly appreciate it, and thank you. So, at this time, I know this came up a little bit about middle school communication, so I did want to speak to the broader community about some of the things we do at the middle school to get the word out. And I say this every year, and I want to thank the board for their feedback, and I want to thank the community for their feedback, but one of the areas that we did change this year was our fifth grade orientation. It was something that, in the past, had started on our staggered start day, which was the first day of school for fifth and sixth graders. We were able to move that to the week before school to hopefully get more parents out in the evening, and to give parents that had elementary school children, as well as middle school children, an opportunity to see their children get on the buses that first day. So, that change came from the community, and we were able to communicate that, and it was very well attended. And actually, based on our first building steering meeting, we've even received more feedback about that fifth grade orientation, so more to come in the future, for sure. But some of the ways that we communicate, and I say this year after year, I spend a lot of time writing our weekly, I'm sorry, our monthly communication. I usually call, the one that's out right now is called our October newsletter. One will come out November 1st, which is our November newsletter. And in that newsletter, I not only send it as a connect ed message to all of you, but we put it on our website. So, there's important dates of events that occur that month, as well as some of the topics that we'd like families to address with their children, and for the community to hear what we're addressing in school with their children as well. So, please, and I say this year after year, read it, read what we put out. I know Dr. Podesta puts out a weekly preview. We put out a monthly communication that is right on our website. In addition to that, if you look up here on the right-hand side, that's on our homepage. So, you'll see, as Michael said, we have our middle school lunch menu for October. Don't get me wrong, the middle school lunch is the best in the community. It's the best out of all three schools. I say this over and over again, Grace, our cook, is phenomenal, and our middle schoolers will tell you that. So, there is our lunch menu, there's our bus routes, here's our supply lists. Washington DC, where's my eighth graders? We have around 55 students going. We want 110 students to go. So, please contact me if you need support with finances or other questions that you have. We'd love to see double the number that we have thus far. We have our middle years program presentation, we have our community meeting information, our bell schedule, latter-day schedule, that's always a big question, club information, media opt-out form, and we also have our daily announcements that are posted as well. So, please know that you can check and see our daily announcements right on our website by just a click away. I talked a little bit about our Google Photos page. Please click on it and see your children. You get to see them in their middle school environment, and of course, our connect ed emails that continue to go out throughout the week. The feedback from the community was actually a little different than we initially thought. We thought sending things out in the evening, when it's a little quieter for families to read, would be the best, but we actually heard that families wanted those communications to go out earlier in the day, so that they could call the middle school if they had any further questions. So, we've tried to make them a little bit earlier, but you'll see them come out at random points of the day. So, please, the number one rule is, read them. Building steering, what a tremendous turnout we had for our October 7th meeting. There were about 20 people in the room, and our conversation thus far has been around the format of our back-to-school nights, as well as our fifth grade orientation, and then, of course, kind of a dialect between how families question teachers, and how teachers can question families, and have that open dialogue back and forth. So, more to come on that topic. Some of the past topics have been IB policies, TOEC trips, schedules, and one that we haven't talked about in a while is One Book One School. And we have a tremendous library and media specialist in Mrs. Hochberg, who spends a lot of time in classrooms around the building. So, I wanted to update you a little bit on communication. The next, and this is fresh off the press, like I said, a big congratulations to the following. Lea Cron as our eighth grade class president, Andrew Cross as our vice president, our representative, seventh grade Adam DeVino, sixth grade Ryan Bird and Connor Keeler, and fifth grade James Delfico and Avery Pinatello. And please, we encourage more and more to join our student council. You don't have to have one a seat to join and stay with student council, but Ms. Diaz and Ms. Turner actually have meetings every Wednesday. And I know it's not always easy to get up in the mornings and get there at 7:00 AM, but our students are there. It's outstanding. And one of the first events that they're preparing for is our Halloween Bash. And for those that ran for positions, I heard a lot of really neat ideas to expand on our Halloween Bash. I actually heard something about a haunted house idea this year, which I thought was unique. And then, of course, we have our food and clothing drive, Spring Fling, talent art and tech show, our monthly dress themes, which we're trying to start up soon, and those meetings are on Wednesdays. And here's just a group photo, an early group photo of our student council, and here's our election posters that were around the building. They are so creative. In fact, one of our students this year had a light around their poster that blinked, so that it actually drew your attention to their poster, which I thought was pretty neat. So, some of the continued opportunities of the middle school. I know that our high school ran their blood drive today. The middle school, we're bringing back our blood drive after quite a few years, and it is going to be student-driven, which is one of our goals with IB. And our students will be encouraging family members and community members to donate, and they will be volunteering their time on Monday, November 3rd. We also have our weekly and dress themes, our Student of the Month Breakfast, which is coming up next week. Clubs have started. What a great turnout we've seen thus far from our clubs, some in the morning, most in the afternoon after school, and of course, sports. You wouldn't know this, but we actually have some middle schoolers who play on varsity sports, which is outstanding. So, we have a lot of great athletes in our community. In fact, I just came from a modified volleyball game, and I think Ms. Anderson had cheered with me. Our volley, girls volleyball team is undefeated, like, the last four years, so they're looking to keep their streak alive. Very competitive volleyball team. So, again, I want to talk a little bit about numbers. I know we talk about class sizes decreasing, but we're actually growing in the middle school a little bit. So, we went back all the way to 21, 22, but I'm not going to go and talk about all these numbers. I just want to talk about the 25, 26 school year. We had a big fifth grade come over. We have six sections with 131 students, and I say it's a minus eight change, because the fifth grade the year before was at 139. But don't get me wrong, they went from 139 to 136, so they only lost three kids that probably moved, and some probably came in, but it kind of balances out. So, this year's fifth grade is at 131 with six sections. This year's sixth grade is at 136 with six sections, and what I mean by sections is six classes across the grade level, which is actually three pods. And then, our smallest group in the middle school, and I'm really hopeful they get up to 100 by the time they move up to ninth grade, but they're currently at 94, and we are actually at four sections in seventh grade. And then, we have up to 109 students in our eighth grade, and that's at five sections. So, if you look here, last year, we had 450 students in the building. This year, we have 470 students in the building, which is a growth of 20 students. So, if you look way back here to 21, 22, there were 491, went down to 479, big jump down to 439, then we're slowly growing again, 450, 470, with that growth of 20. And at this point, I would like to invite up Ms. Tricalla, who is one of our IB middle years program coordinators. And Mary Kay Cohen couldn't be here with us this evening, but Stephanie will speak on behalf of both. And they've done tremendous work with our teachers and our students.
I'm just going to go with that. So, I have a tough act to follow with those students, but I'm going to do my best to wow you with our middle years program. So, I am Stephanie Tricalla. I have the pleasure of working with Mary Kay Cohen, my partner in crime, my left hand or my right hand on any given day. With regards to what we're going to talk about, or what I will talk about this evening, is where we were, where we're going, and also show you a little bit of what's going on in our classrooms with our NYPD program. So, looking back at last year, in September, we launched our informational NYPD website. We have updated it with videos showcasing some of the work that's done in the classroom. It's for all of our families and community members to learn more about the program. What is NYPD? Well, it's for all. Back in October of last year, Mary Kay and I had the opportunity to go to Mystic, Connecticut for the Gibbs Conference. The Gibbs is the Guild for the Northeast Schools. We had an opportunity to connect with other coordinators, teachers, and learn about the program and how it works for us in Putnam Valley. In December, we submitted our application for authorization, and right then and there, it just basically went in pretty like fast speed. On January, we received our feedback with regards to our authorization application. In April, our visitors came to visit. It was over the course of two days where they met with teachers, they met with myself and Mary Kay, our administrator, they met with board members, they met with parents, and they even met with students. They were in and out of the classrooms. And in June, we received word that we are finally an IB world school, offering the middle years program to all. Also, in June, I think this was with the work of Jackie Levine, teachers had the opportunity to go locally instead of flying to Florida or flying across the country to Colorado, but rather just go to Putnam Northern Westchester Bowses and receive training in creating authentic units in mathematics, I'm sorry, not mathematics, ELA and social studies. So, it was right in our backyard where we were able to offer training to our teachers and allow them and afford them that opportunity to go as well. So, looking forward, this year, our goal is to create an additional NYPD unit in the eight different subject groups. We're also going to work on focusing on assessment, not only addressing the objectives and the strands, but assessing them through authentic summative tasks. We're also rolling out our community project to our eighth grade, year-three students, and what does that look like? Well, Miranda Hochberg has been appointed our community project coordinator. She's our library and media specialist. She actually, last year, did get trained up in Boston on the community project, and she has also worked with one of the, well, the library and media specialist and coordinator in Somers. So, she's been doing a lot of work inside and outside of the classroom. In fact, in a couple of weeks, she will be moving into the INS classes, social studies, to introduce the program. What's going to happen is the students will learn about how they're going to be investigating, planning, taking action, and then also reflecting on their projects. The projects with regards to them, the students are expected to complete or work 15 hours on these projects. They will be in groups of three to five students. They will utilize some of their time in INS, but then also, some of the time will have to happen outside of school, or even in the school day. We have our academic study period, which will be a great time for students to also work on those projects. We are looking for teachers. We are looking for teachers to also be supervisors for those groups. So we will have teachers that will act as supervisors for a group of 10 to 12 students. So to now show you a little bit of what's going on in our classrooms. So our fifth graders, since NYPD is for all, and our fifth graders would be considered not necessarily part of the program, they are very much part of the program. Our fifth graders work really hard with the learner profile. This past month, the month of September, they learned about principled. They read the book, The Empty Pot, and did different activities discussing what it means to be principled and were reflective on when they too had been principled. So they made connections with the characters in the story. They discussed the importance of being principled. And now we move into October and our next learner profile attribute, and also the different activities they will do with that. So here is, and let's see if it'll work. In the arts, this is an actual interdisciplinary unit that Ms. Gazola created. It is incorporating design and the arts. The statement of inquiry that the students studied throughout their unit was "Our perspective shapes our stories and storytelling methods." The summative task that they had to complete was to create a stop-motion animation film with a story that contains a beginning, middle, and end. The movie should be short, it needs to be a narrative, and utilize various techniques to animate 2D and 3D figures. The students were assessed in three of the strands, investigating, developing, and creating a performance, in this case, a small film. And math. There we go. The students in Ms. Muffet, Ms. Bablo, and Ms. Minch's class, they studied the statement of inquiry, which is "A change in form can artistically reshape space." So even though this wasn't an interdisciplinary unit, it actually is because they incorporated the arts into their mathematics class. The summative task that the students were asked to create at the end of their unit was to create a beautiful piece of wrapping paper using transformations. So they had to use their knowledge of translations, reflections, rotations, and dilations. They had to use these transformations to make their design look balanced and interesting. And balance is actually one of our learner profile attributes. They also had to explain the map behind their thinking, behind their design, and how the transformations work together. So through this, the students were assessed in their understanding of mathematical terms, how well they communicated that, and then also how they applied those skills to real-life contexts.
You said all those terms so well. One might think you're certified in math.
I might be. One of my many, many, you know, jack-of-all-trades, master-of-most, is what I like to say. So NYPD is truly for all students. And at the middle school, the teachers have done an outstanding job making this all happen. We really would not be where we are if it wasn't due to their hard work. The staff and the teachers are absolutely outstanding, and I really see great things coming our way at Putnam Valley Middle School. So if any of them are watching, thank you for all that you did last year to make this dream a reality. It really is their hard work that made this truly possible. So, and that is what, moving on.
I know that Stephanie and Mary Kay don't always like to recognize themselves for their hard work as well, but I have to tell you, being the teacher leaders that they are, they go into our team meetings weekly and work with our teachers. And I know how difficult that can be from a leadership perspective at times. And they do a tremendous job in bringing items back to us as administration, some of the challenges that might exist. And then we come together to brainstorm solutions. And a big round of applause for Mary Kay and Stephanie for all the work that they do. And like in, sorry, I think the mic was giving some backfeed. Like in all organizations, I do want to recognize all of our teachers and our staff. Just like Stephanie mentioned, they've done a tremendous amount of work in creating their IB units over the past few years, and they continue to grow those units. And as she mentioned, they're now working on assessments and our community project, and we're continuing to grow those. And that's no easy feat. But the one commonality that we have at the middle school is a common language moving forward, a common structure, and a common format for all. And as she stated, it's for all students, and it's for all of our teachers. There's no one content area that weighs more than any other. It's balanced across the board. And that's super important to remember. And thank you, thank you to all. I did want to highlight our website again, being that people talked a little bit about communication. When you click on our middle school site, here it talks a little bit about our school, student-parent resources, staff directory, our support team, which does a tremendous amount of work with our clinicians, our school psychologist, social worker, school counselors, and supporting our students. Here's the whole site on the Middle Years Program. And then, of course, notices. And right below this, you'll see a couple of pictures. And then below that, you'll see the Google Photos. And then below that, you'll see my October news letter. So again, please refer back to that website to answer any of the questions you might have as well. And the last part, and these are a few photos from TOEC, from our sixth graders who visited this year. And by the way, you would have no idea what an impact this has on our kids unless you see it in pictures. I mean, it's one thing to be able to sit here and say, "Our kids went to TOEC." It's another to see their experience through the photos. And it was a tremendous opportunity for our sixth graders so far. Our fifth, seventh, and eighth graders will be going soon. But at this point, does our board have any questions with regard to the information that we've posted and shared?
Very good presentation. I do have something for Ms. Zeca. If you could come up. You would ask for a map. And I, I did get a map that's 22-years-old, put out by our Putnam Valley Business Association, which no longer exists. Now, it also has the history of her town, all the advertisers at the time from 2004. And the whole map of Putnam Valley at the time. Most of those businesses have long since disappeared, unfortunately. But it's a nostalgic piece.
Good luck with that.
Right.
Thank you, Sam.
Travis, I do have one question. On the science results, now this is a fairly new program, isn't it, and the exam?
It is.
Could you talk a little bit about the history of that?
Sure. So quite a few years ago, New York State had shared with us that they released a whole bunch of standards with regards to science. And they said that the assessment was coming in a few years. And then it got delayed, and it got delayed, and it got delayed. So it was like, we were addressing these standards, but we didn't have an assessment to be able to kind of work off of. So last year was our second year of the assessment. So this year coming up will be our third year. And now they've released some of the questions. And again, it's always about aligning to what the assessment is going to look like.
Exactly, yeah.
And if you hit on the standards, our students will do well. And one of the things that our teachers preach often is, "Think like a scientist." And I love that line because the kids basically need to look at the data in front of them and observe, and then come up with claims and support it, in a sense. And I know Ms. Barlos is here, who does a lot of work with the science in the elementary school. And again, it takes a village, right? And these children come up to the middle school and continue that experience. But yes, it is new. It's only, we only have two years' worth of results. And as you can see, compared to this region, in a sense, we're right along the lines of how the region is doing. Again, there's always room for growth, but we'll get there over time. And again, our teachers are doing a tremendous amount of work and a great job with these investigations that were new. We're learning as we go with the materials that are used. We're using some companies, then we get our own materials. We find that are better in some cases. So over time, we grow and improve, and our kids are getting better and better.
I don't understand the logic of the state assigning a course with an amorphous assessment floating in some outer-space area. How can you base a program when you don't even know what the expectations are going to be from the state of New York? It makes me crazy.
Well, and the thing that I struggle with sometimes is, our students are taking this assessment computer-based. And when I think of science, I think hands-on.
There you go.
I think it's important to look at data, but I also think it's important to get your hands dirty, to get out into nature, to look, yes, to look at the data. And I know there's got to be efficient ways to assess. But again, it is so important to have those labs and those investig, they call them investigations now.
Yeah.
And when you walk into our science classrooms, you see our kids engaged, collaborating, working together, hands-on. And that's what science is to me.
That's the important part.
And then we're assessing them over a computer.
I agree. I agree. Good. Thank you. Thank you.
Absolutely, Sam.
Travis, just to the science, I'm hoping, because I know the fifth-grade teachers, if they're building on the elementary school work, there has to be deliberate coordination between the elementary. It can't just be, I don't know, kind of haphazard. Because those scores will directly depend on the work that was done at the elementary level. The other question I had was, I think you had like 80-some students taking the science assessment out of a class of 100 and something. Like, do they also have, I know math has an alternative for kids that are taking algebra, but does science have, or?
They do not have an alternative. But with any New York State assessment, there is the opportunity to refuse.
That's right. That's right.
So there is some sort of refusal rate. But with that class of 87, the entire class was 110. So we're not far off.
Yeah, but I'd hate to think that 30 kids didn't even challenge themselves to take the exam. So maybe we need to do some PR or something around, you know, challenging yourself to take an exam even if it's hard.
Absolutely.
Because otherwise, it's hard to know how successful our program is if we have students that are not participating in the test.
Agreed. We've actually seen less and less students refuse assessments. I feel like that trend is moving in a positive direction. We've had more kids take New York State assessments than we've seen in the past. At one point, we had upwards of 30% refusal rates. We're way down to like, I don't want to make up a number, but we're either in the teens or we're at like 10%.
Okay, that's good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you to the kids, the students, Jamie and yourself for presenting. Appreciate it. A couple of questions. First of all, would love to see a science fair in the middle school. Putting that out there. So with that, I'd love to, I'd like, I know that Ms. Levine's going to go through test results in detail in a couple of meetings, but loved seeing the growth that's occurring at the middle school. But I have to call out the sixth grade because, once again, they have stellar results. And there has to be special sauce or best practices we can utilize there to carry out through the grades. So, wanted to note that.
So I do want to give you a little feedback on the science fair. So I know Ms. Tricalla talked about Ms. Hochberg with the community project. Although the community project isn't necessarily fully just based on science, some of that work will be based on science. And with that community project, there will be a fair for kids to present that work with inviting the community and to see that work that they do. So I know that it's not based solely on just science, but there will be opportunity to present that work, and it'll be community project-based. But again, I hear you about the community fair. We did post it. We're working on getting advisors for that to happen. We're hopeful to do something similar to what the elementary school does with the science research students coming over and working with middle schoolers, much in the same way that they come over and work with the elementary school teachers. We actually drafted something up, had everything kind of laid out. And now we're working on finding the advisors to make it happen. So don't think it's not in the works. Working behind the scenes to try to encourage it to happen. Give me a little bit of time.
And I just want to make sure I don't remember if I called you out, Stephanie. Great job. And to the entire team that's working on the NYPD program. Thank you.
Thank you.
So for me, I think maybe an overarching theme for this evening in this presentation is leadership. And it takes tremendous building leaders in order to make this all possible. And we got the opportunity to hear from Mr. Mercardi and Ms. Zeca. I think we heard from some of our outstanding teacher leaders, hearing from Stephanie and obviously Mary Kay, who can't be here, but certainly deserves a great deal of congratulations for their work that was undone. And then we heard from some of our student leaders, right, and leaders of tomorrow, talking a little bit about their experience in fifth grade and their experience in eighth grade. And I think you guys represented everyone who is not here this evening, but still makes everything that we heard about this evening possible. So I did want to thank and congratulate you all. An outstanding job. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
I do have just a couple of items. First of all, I just want to thank you for listening to the feedback about the fifth-grade orientation. Also, about the feedback to the district that many have given around conflicts in different areas. We have gotten so much better at that. So thank you to everybody who works on the district calendar to make sure that a person who has a kindergarten student and a fifth-grade student can be at both really important first days and that not be something affected, you know, in their lives. So thank you for that. I do think that one of the most significant transitions in the pre-K to 12 career is that of going from elementary school to middle school. And having that orientation ahead of school beginning, I think relieves a tremendous amount of anxiety for students and for parents. And so I would encourage you to continue that theme if we can. I also want to mention that that was a significant topic at our steering committee. So thank you so much. That was a wonderful turnout. Kudos to you for getting 20 people in the room for steering committee. That was just awesome. We had a lovely group of parents and educators there. It was great. And I'm looking forward to more of those conversations. I want to just tailback on what you said about the sixth grade. Something is happening in sixth grade that is golden, and that's super exciting because that means that we can hopefully replicate it. Now, I don't know enough about the historical data to know if it is a cohort thing or if it is an educator thing. But according to what I heard tonight, it seems to be a pattern. And so the other piece of that that I'd like to just talk about is the comparison charts. Thank you so much, with the data, comparing our data to the surrounding areas. What I would say is that the elementary school is also seeing a tremendous amount of impact in that particular data set against surrounding districts. And what I would say is there's an opportunity here to be able to intervisit one another. And I would love to see the district take advantage of that opportunity. Intervisitation with those sixth-grade teachers for the middle school, and also intervisitation between elementary school teachers and middle school teachers, to go to both, right? So that middle school teachers can see what's happening in elementary school and perhaps why the scores at the elementary school are so incredibly outstanding. But also for elementary school teachers to see the expectations of middle school and what students are having to look forward to, specifically as it relates to science. Because that science assessment, as you shared, is not just a fifth-grade or an eighth-grade assessment. It is multiple years of learning that is combined into one. And if we looked at the science test last year, specifically the fifth grade, it had many, many third-grade concepts on it. And so it's really important that that intervisitation be happening, if it's not. I don't think we necessarily celebrated the algebra students as much as we should have. 100% pass rate for those classes is absolutely outrageous and amazing. And that deserves to be completely and totally shouted out, especially because for most of them, I think for all of them, it's their first regions. That is wonderful. So I think that that deserves fireworks. And the only other thing that I would say regarding the communication piece is I think one of the challenges is probably that parents don't necessarily realize, coming from the elementary school to middle school, if it's their first rodeo in the middle school, that the communication won't be weekly anymore. It'll be monthly. And so maybe that's something we can mention prior to the end of the elementary school year, before that transition, so that they can just know. It's going to be more information, but fewer through. but fewer throughout the school year. And this way, they can just know, like, just look for that communication at the beginning of the month to know what's coming. So, thank you for all the work that you've done. Yeah.
I'll let Ms. Zeca address one of your points and then I'm going to address like three of them.
Okay, awesome.
I'll be short and sweet.
Hi.
So, part of the work that I've been doing with our district K-12 writing committee is just that. It's really looking at what are we doing at each level from kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade? And it's eye-opening when you see the types of writing, the types of strategies that are being used in every single classroom, the kinds of tasks, the rubrics, how kids are producing. We're using models. We're growing it this year to include what does it look like for a brand-new teacher to walk into any grade level? What are those tasks? What are the models? What should I expect from students? Um, because I do think that the answers are here, right? We have tremendous staff. We have wonderful teachers. The answers are here. And I do think that with looking at it district-wide, it gives everyone an opportunity to truly understand where did our kids come from? Where are they going? Uh, we've had great conversations in the, um, K-12 writing committee over the past two years that are eye-opening. It's no longer like, uh, each building is siloed. It's how are we going to work together as a community to really foster this? And part of our conversations at the end of last year and the beginning of this year is what does that science test look like? What do those students need to do in order to pass that test? And some of it is legitimately writing, nonfiction, writing for informational responses. What does it look like for the reader? Well, they need to dissect what those charts, what those graphs, what those visuals look like and apply science, but it's a reading test. At the end of the day, our students are being asked to read and write in science. So, with that in mind, our ELA teachers are kind of leading the charge in what does that look like? What strategies do our kids need to access that information, to access that test? Um, and the benefit of being in elementary school is you're one person teaching all those classes and you have complete control over the content. Um, it gets harder in middle school and high school because now we're departmentalized. Fifth and sixth grade has the luxury of being the, um, science and math teacher or the, um, humanities teacher. Um, but once we get from seventh grade, we really do need to rely on our other colleagues to kind of lead the charge in those areas. But again, they're reading and writing tests. As even the math, it's reading what those graphs are saying and how I need to produce an answer and explain my answer. So, we are trying to look a little bit deeper in what are those expectations and what is the common language happening in every single classroom so that we have kids transferring those skills? So, it's not just I'm doing this in ELA and the door closes or opens and that's it. It's really taking those pieces and going into every single classroom and every single task, utilizing the same language and the same skill set. So, it's happening. Um, I think that it's been a, a slow charge, but we're building momentum.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And I think the power of looking at student work samples specifically in writing can go a really long way. It's a very high-leverage move because writing is in every content area.
Absolutely.
Um, and learning how to navigate different genres of writing for the audience that, that you're looking to, uh, write to is really, really important. And I, I can see that work a hundred percent affecting what's happening in science and every other content therefore. Um, I would say that intervisitation though, when you have, um, a unique skill set within one particular grade level, like, it's undeniable what's happening in sixth grade. And I do think that there is an extreme amount of power in teachers being able to go visit one another, whether it's just through a partnership of you're my accountability partner, I'm going to go see you and you're going to go see me. Um, but you know, in the city, that that is, that is the model, is to be able to go and see lab site classrooms, classrooms that have been trained, classrooms that have been, uh, in full-blown, um, uh, whether it's about a, a body of work, looking at a particular body of work or looking at a particular.
I was a model classroom, so I got, yeah.
Right, exactly. And so, looking at those lab site classrooms can be really, really very powerful because there's nothing like a teacher seeing another teacher teach.
Right.
Um, and, and truthfully, administrators really don't need to be part of it, which is a wonderful thing. It's teachers growing other teachers, which, which really, uh, helps to increase the leadership in the school, as Dr. Luff was mentioning. So, I think it is a unique opportunity that we might have. Um, I would ask everyone to try to just explore that. Um, and I also think that building that bridge from elementary to middle school all the more can really help our students to have a little bit more of a smoother transition as they go from one school to the other, from non-departmentalized to departmentalized for all of those reasons. Um, so, you know, I look forward to hearing more about the writing work. I know that the MTSS work went really well last year. Um, so thank you again for all that you're doing.
Thanks for your feedback.
I have one question for Jamie. Um, you spoke about how it's a writing, which I absolutely agree. Um, and you have mentioned that science is really hands-on. I'm really concerned that, um, you know, only fifty percent are passing. Um, that's a low number. I don't care what the other districts are doing. It's a low number. Um, I think it's really important that they learn to, like, the ELA numbers are much better, but are they learned, are they practicing taking science tests?
In ELA, they do see nonfiction tests.
Okay.
All the way through.
And are they learning test-taking strategies?
I mean, literally from kindergarten through twelve, absolutely. Because reading is not just siloed to fiction. It's nonfiction as well. And what happens in literacy is in elementary school, most students are exposed to fiction specifically. And as we increase as adult readers, um, we're exposed to mostly nonfiction. So, there is a transition to start to teach those nonfiction strategies. Um, but I will say, I, last year, when Carrie Burdette presented, they were in nonfiction pieces.
They were.
So, it is happening. Um, I do think that, um, the science test is something that we're just, we're really examining it and dissecting it and, and really trying to understand what is the state asking our kids to do? Um, how do we help them answer those questions? But not just answer questions on a test and be a good bubbler or a good sentence writer, but where's the thinking, right? And what is the thinking that students need in order to answer any questions that they're being asked? Um, so we are being reflective on what are those metacognitive skills our kids need in order to answer any question anywhere, um, for any genre?
Yeah. I mean, I think I, that is all, all, um, I think it's great. I just think that unfortunately, test-taking is a part of our lives.
Yeah.
They take the SAT, you take the MCAT.
And it's a skill, right?
It's a skill. And, um, I just worry, or not worry, it's not worrying. I just, I, I know that there's not that, I, I don't know if there's enough practice and enough test-taking strategies. And I don't know if they're learning it in the elementary school. I'd just like to see, like, it go from the elementary school.
Sure.
Up, um.
Yeah. So, one of the things that I want to just share so that the community knows is that this science test is very different than the former one. Um, the former one was more of a learn science facts, learn things about science and be able to regurgitate them. That this is no longer the test. The test is actually not drawing upon much of their knowledge of science. It's drawing upon their ability to critically think with science information given to them on the test. So, they have to take this piece of information, this piece of information, and this piece of information, put it all together and synthesize an idea that is supported by evidence from those pieces of information that were given. And so, it is no longer that recall information, science fact kind of, you know, test. To your point though, and just like we talk about with, you know, last night was back-to-school night at the high school, and I heard a lot of teachers talking about, um, this is how we prepare your kids for the regions because at the end of the day, they, they need to pass that, right? Um, and it is, the, the reality is, our teachers are phenomenal at being able to understand that, yeah, they have to take that test, but building it in more to help the students understand how to do that while they're really teaching the content that they need to learn because it's about learning, not test-taking, right? And so, I think as we get better at learning this science exam, that we'll be able to do that over time, to embed test questions that look like the state exam in everyday instruction, so that it's not just cramming them for test prep, but it's instead really teaching them to critically think over time. And I will say that our IB program will absolutely feed into that thinking, um, because it's all about critical thinking. So, I think we're going to be in an okay place and Sasha, I also want you to know that no one has really passed this test well in the last two years that it has come out.
I'm not trying to criticize, like, and I, I agree. I absolutely believe that critical thinking is obviously the more important thing.
No one has.
Yeah.
Um, but like in nursing school, which is science.
It's not well-planned.
That's how we test it. We just practice and practice and practice exams. And that's what helps you pass the exams. So, if we're not having science tests.
Right. Well, right, and to your point, science twenty-one.
Not on content, but maybe on nonfiction.
The curriculum, science twenty-one that we use, um, has projects at the end of, um, units that are graded based on a rubric, but it does not come with an actual full-blown assessment that will help them to practice that. So, that might have to be something to be thought about. I know certainly we're thinking about that in the district.
I think, I think too, to Sam's point, um, we've had this assessment for two years.
Yeah.
Right.
And I don't think any New York State assessment in their infancy had a tremendous amount of proficiency in the first couple of years. Like, the state didn't release a state test.
Exactly.
For the first change, and eighty percent of the state was proficient. I think in, I, like, if I look way back at our numbers, there were times where we changed from that recall assessment to synthesizing. And by the way, synthesizing is something that is also developmental over time. So, I know we continue to think that as we push down the ability to synthesize, some kids aren't able to do that until certain ages developmentally. So, being the fact that we've only had two New York State assessments in science, we're still learning as teachers because, as Crystal had shared and Sam, those first few years, we didn't know what that assessment was going to look like, so we were just addressing standards the best way we could. Now that it's released, it makes it easier on us to know how to mirror what they're looking for. And at the end of the day, um, being good test-takers is one piece, but also being able to look at data and think critically and use that is so important. That's a life skill, so.
That's obviously more important.
We're growing, we're getting there, for sure.
Well, the point you made, Travis, earlier about this hands-on, you know, getting the kids involved, doing the, you know, the investigations, that's the key to it. The assessment, and I've never been big on those, and you know that, Travis, from way back when. Uh, it's what they learn while doing. That, that couple hours of, of exam time, I don't think it measures much of anything, quite frankly.
And just to address, um, the question around sixth grade, um, so, some of you may or may not remember, it was a time ago, but, um, I was a sixth-grade humanities teacher. And, um, we are trying to leverage what sixth grade does well amongst our other grade levels. And we have certain grade levels that share common time with sixth grade that we are leveraging. Uh, Ms. Zeca and I are having departmental meetings monthly to share best practices. And to another point of intervisitation, this was actually a big topic for us already in September.
Awesome.
Where we talked about having not only our new teachers, um, visit veteran teachers or teachers who have good practice in certain areas, um, but to work with their mentors and to work with, uh, departments to ask for that time to visit. And I always say, you don't know what you don't know. So, we as administrators can share with them, this teacher has great classroom management skills, this teacher has great structure in their class, this teacher does a really nice job with exit tickets and entrance tickets. So, what we do is we give those ideas to teachers through our observations and we give them opportunities to visit and we put subs in their spaces. So, absolutely a tremendous practice that we're trying to leverage and also using some of what we have seen over time with sixth grade results. Actually, the sixth grade results are the best in the district. I know that for a fact because I look at all the data. Um, so what we're trying to do is leverage those best practices. And I will tell you, one of the pieces is consistency and collaboration. Those are the two pieces that, that grade level does very well. And I think other grade levels are growing in those areas, um, and we're seeing growth in those other areas. But again, when you look at the results, it's, you, you see it.
Right, and.
It's very evident.
Just looking at the trajectory that our elementary students are on, if they are performing between ten to twenty percent greater than PNW Bozies Districts and Lower Hudson Districts, then that trajectory, in theory, should continue. Our trajectory for the middle school right now is that they are in line with those other districts, which is wonderful. And it is very hard to be in line with Lower Hudson Westchester, um, Lower Westchester Bozies, right? Because the districts are just distinct from Putnam Northern Westchester, and we know that. So, that is already a wonderful achievement for our district to even be in line in that capacity. Um, but knowing the students and their capability that are coming up, the way that they have been trained to engage in learning, we would hope that that trajectory would continue to see that ten to twenty percent above those other districts. Um, and if that were not happening, which might be the case, we're not sure yet because they haven't gotten to the middle school yet, that's, that's why I say there's a good opportunity there for, for intervisitation, um, to see how that consistency can still live in the middle school even though they are departmentalized, right? Um, and I do think that a lot of it has to do with just, like, organization. You know, it might be the trapper keeper, you know? Sixth grade rocks that trapper keeper, so, um, you know, who knows, right? But again, the conversations, but seeing it live is very different than having a conversation about it, and I think there's gold there. So, thank you so much for your leadership. Congratulations on your IB certification.
And to your point as well with executive functioning skills, I do know, uh, Jackie Levine's not here this evening, but we did bring in IDE this year.
Yes.
To work on a portal of executive functioning skills that our teachers are engaging with during our PD sessions once a month. So, we're not only working on IB work, but we're bringing those executive functioning strategies and skills into our classrooms as well. And they go hand in hand, um, so.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all, and thank you to our teachers, and thank you to our board.
Great job, everyone. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to talk about policy updates, the board. Um, well, last year, we, the last two years, I think, we had a policy committee that went through all of our policies, but we're trying to not have to do that again. Um, so, we're trying to do a few at a time so that over five years, we will go through all the policies. So, I know that you guys met again, um, at the end of September, um, and we're going to talk about updates and new required policies.
Thank you. So, as you had mentioned, this is sort of the second time in the past few years we're going through this policy. This is our first policy on, uh, what you said is now going to be a staggered review of policies with the Port Policy Committee. So, uh, some of the topics are included. Obviously, as we always do, we took the NISBA recommendations over the past few years since this policy had last been reviewed, um, put those in and then went and reread every word of it to ensure that it still met what we were looking for. Some of the policies that are included in this update are nondiscrimination and equal opportunity policy, sexual harassment policy, and student harassment and bullying prevention and intervention policies. So, that's a quick overview. Um, I wish it wasn't fifty-one pages talking about those things. Um, but it is. So, um, tonight will be the first read and then there'll be an opportunity next meeting to have a second reading in which time it will be adopted.
Yep, good.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Maureen.
For just us or for the community too?
Yeah.
Okay. So, if people have questions or concerns about any of the changes, they can bring them to the next board meeting and we'll, it'll be part of the agenda so we can discuss it beforehand. Okay. Student representatives, we have one, yay!
Hey, Leona. Hello. Um, today we had our blood drive, which a lot of people did. Um, color wars is next week, and with that, we have spirit week following, so Tuesday to Friday. Um, last week, we did club rush, so all the clubs went outside in the, in that wing.
Courtyard.
Huh?
Courtyard?
Courtyard?
Oh, they said outside.
No, 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 like outside the cafeteria.
Oh, gotcha.
That hallway, I don't know what it's called. Um, and all the clubs lined up so, to like spike interest for like, especially the freshmen to join. And then, this is actually a big thing, the boys soccer team won their first game in like two years. So, I think it was pretty cool. Yeah, they did. Yeah, they did.
Brazilians, Brazilians.
Yes, and then they won again on senior night, which is, which is really good. And a lot of sports have been, we've been having our senior nights and clubs have been starting. And then a lot of seniors have been applying for college to meet the deadlines.
How did the blood drive go today? Did you see? We came later, it was over. I just wondered how it.
I did it in the morning. I saw a lot, a lot of seniors participated.
Okay.
Um, and teachers do it and I think a lot of, a lot of people were signed up. The sheet was filled. So and there was like a constant um, rotation of people coming in and out.
Excellent.
Thank you.
It's desperately needed. Did you have any thoughts about the middle school presentation? Does it sound like it's changed since you were in middle school?
Yeah, it's really different than, I, I mean, they're getting a completely different experience than I did because I was, I had COVID for all of middle school, so I missed out on a bunch.
Oh, my God. Yeah.
And I missed out on like the, like really good years of like learning basic things. So it's, it's definitely affected high school. And because high school, now they have to go back and like reteach basic things to us because we literally do not know, like a lot of it, which is like, but now they have the IB thing there. I don't know how that's going to work for them though.
How do you think, yeah, do you think that will help feed into the high school?
Yeah, I mean, I think the kids will come smarter, but and with better, like, because right now it's, it's like, um, no one's doing like, I mean, maybe kids are doing, every, uh, I don't know.
I think they will be more thoughtful learners. You know what I mean? Like rather than just memorizers of facts.
Yeah.
Um, and one of the advantages, I, I know that COVID left gaps, but like everybody of your generation, you know, everybody's in the same boat.
Yeah.
So you got probably more than most, you know, so, okay.
Yeah, that COVID impacted the education system without a doubt. And uh, the things you said, there's much truth to that. Um, I, I, I hope the state takes a better look next time. God forbid if we ever have another epidemic because I messed it up. I, I really.
I'm just glad that.
I don't even want to start that topic because I could get rabid on it.
I'm just glad colleges don't require SAT scores because no one's doing too great on that.
I hear you. I hear you.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Luft?
Good evening, everyone. So just prior to this meeting, I had the opportunity to hold our first superintendent listening hour of the year. So I want to thank those parents who showed up as well as the board members, administrators, as well as other staff members. Uh, some of the topics we discussed uh, this evening were, I know a letter went out to some families of middle schoolers regarding a vacancy in Spanish. Uh, just some background information in anticipation of what was going to be a maternity leave. The district was proactive in hiring a replacement teacher several months earlier. Unfortunately, that teacher um, has not decided to come to work. So we will be rescinding their appointment this evening. Uh, but we have for the last several weeks been anxiously seeking a replacement teacher that will be able to cover that classroom now through what we anticipate will be April. So my public service announcement to everyone in the community is if anybody knows anybody who may be interested, to please have them reach out. We're willing to work with people to help get them certified. We're willing to get people on the substitute list and they can help support the lessons that are already being given in the classes. Um, but we are anxiously seeking a replacement for the teacher and um, looking to best support the students as we can in that class. So any internal coverages that we can put in place, we've already done. Uh, now we're seeking any help from outside that we can. We're contacting colleges, we're contacting other school districts, we're on listservs. We're doing everything possible to reach out there and hopefully find the right person that can help bridge this gap for us. So uh, that was the topic. A middle school lunch and recess is always a popular one that had come up as well, as well as some other um, classroom conversations or about specific grade levels. And I'm trying to think of any other big topics. I know Spanish took up a lot of it.
Bosse's?
Oh, yeah, we spoke a little bit about CTE program. There was a sentiment out there where students' grades were too high to attend Bosse's. Um, I, I know for a fact that in many cases, that's the exact opposite is true. And in some cases, students' grades are not high enough or they do not do well enough to get into certain Bosse's programs. I know many of the Bosse's programs now are, are credit granting. So they're affiliated with colleges, they're extremely rigorous and actually uh, reward students. In fact, one specific one we were talking about, the new vision program in health, uh, award students up to eighteen college credits just by completing that course through Bosse. So um, I guess that misinformation is out there. Uh, we were doing our best to clarify that that is definitely not the case in terms of Bosse's. And we certainly encourage high achieving students to take advantage of those opportunities if they think that is best serves them. Just some quick updates on recent events. I had the opportunity to attend the New York State Superintendent's Conference for Leadership Summit uh, from September twenty-eighth to the thirtieth. We had our first high school, middle school lockdown drill. As we have said in the past, those are now done in concert with each other. So they're done in collaboration. If one goes in lockdown, the other one does, the police officers. And we thank all those who um, came. We had members of the sheriff's department as well as the New York State troopers come in and help release the students and we practiced it just as if it would go if it were the, the real thing. Uh, we had our second meeting of the Culture and Discipline Committee last evening. It was very well attended and we're looking forward to continuing that work. Our middle school held their eighth grade Washington DC trip. My, I think I say this every time it comes up, as an eighth grader who attended school here in Putnam Valley, I had the opportunity to visit Washington DC. And many years later, it's still one of the most memorable experiences of my life. Um, I remember all the tourist sites. I remember the opportunity to be able to travel with my friends and the uh, being there with teachers. It was just really an amazing experience and I encourage all students to take advantage of it. Thanks to the generosity of our Putnam Valley Education Foundation, we do have some scholarship opportunities to help offset the cost of that trip available. So I don't want the price of the trip to be what prevents anyone from going. So I encourage everyone to get information. If you're interested, reach out to the middle school administration or trip advisor to get more information on how to do that. Last evening, our high school held their back to school night, which I heard was very well attended. I saw very positive feedback from our community members back to our high school. Um, this morning, we had a meeting with the Putnam Valley Federation of Teachers Executive Board. And I spoke a little bit about our listening hours. Looking, uh, some more information to share, I'm actually going to quickly just introduce this and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Chan to speak a little bit more. Um, our district was awarded a national fitness grant. So this will allow us to um, it'll help offset the cost of something that we think is going to be really exciting for our community, for our athletics program and for our physical education programs. And Grace was really instrumental working with Dave Spittle to make this all possible. So I'm going to turn it over to her to speak a little bit more about this grant and what opportunity it presents. Go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, I read something about a grant and I looked into it further and turns out that there was one K to twelve district upstate Mohandersen who already took this grant and brought this outdoor fitness into their school district. I thought it was very exciting, so I wanted to bring it into our school district. I did a lot of research. I uh, reached out to the business official to make sure that this would be allowed to have state aid. And then I did a number of Zoom meetings with the National Fitness Campaign to see if we would be qualified. And then at that point, I brought it to Dr. Luft's attention and I'm so lucky that he likes the ideas that we bring into the district. And uh, in the back of my mind, I felt that if we're the first ones to bring it on here, then maybe the Garrison High School kids would like to come here instead of other choices. And we were very lucky to receive a sixty thousand dollar grant, which to date is the highest grant that they um, awarded a school. They give ten grants a, to each state and only four to educational institutions, which include higher ed. So we are one of the first ones to receive the grant for 2026. Thank you.
Where, where would the outdoor fitness uh, be located?
So it's going to be located, part of the application included a site survey and we had to be able to show where it's going to go. Um, one of the big emphasis of the application of the program is for community access. So it's actually going to go outside of the wellness center over near where the gardens are, uh, which is immediately adjacent to the wellness trail. So the thought process is it's in close proximity to the high school. So athletic teams practice out there, physical education classes can go out there. But at the same time, uh, has immediate access to the community. Those who are using the wellness trail could easily stop and take advantage of the sort of exercise opportunities that will take place there.
I, I just want to compliment you, Dr. Chan. Uh, the Garrison Food Program that, you know, you initiated and now this grant and uh, you know, last year's budget and, and the capital projects. Uh, you've, you've been a such a great asset to this district and it's so appreciated. I, I mean that. Uh, great things and uh, it, it just blows my mind what you've accomplished in, you know, the little bit of time you've been here.
Thank you. And I have to say, it really is because we have such a great leadership here, Dr. Luft. Thank you.
I didn't pay her to say any of that, I promise. Um, I don't know, it certainly takes its aim. I know uh, Dave Spittle and then Robert Webb were um, very instrumental in helping Dr. Chan complete the application. Really, all I did was give my blessing and wish them the best on their way. So they certainly deserve all of the credit for making it possible. So we're actually hopeful that will take place uh, over this upcoming summer and hopefully we'll be ready to go for the beginning of next school year if it all works out.
Great.
It's great.
Uh, just some other quick announcements. Uh, as the communication went out this evening during my listening hour, so rude. Um, everybody's phone started ringing simultaneously in the middle of it. Uh, schools will be closed, a state mandated early dismissal drill for all buildings. So that all students will be leaving fifteen minutes early. Um, much less of an issue for middle school, high school, much larger issue for elementary school. So if you meet your children at the bus stop on Friday or if you pick up your children on Friday, please make sure that you arrive fifteen minutes earlier than your typical time because that's when buildings will dismiss. As uh, we had mentioned before, the high school Color Wars event is upcoming on October seventeenth. I have a lower Hudson Council School Superintendent's Meeting tomorrow where we'll, we'll be meeting with, there'll be two, two topics. One will be a meeting with the Executive Director of the New York State Public High School Athletic Association, focused on schools without boundaries, um, sort of the collision of private schools and public schools competing for state championships, as well as some advocacy work for the upcoming year. And other quick announcements, tomorrow evening will be our first responder appreciation football game. So that's tomorrow at six PM. Anyone, please, if you are a first responder, whether it be in law enforcement, in fire, in health, in safety, in um, the military, anybody who's considered a first responder, we encourage you to show up. We have removed the embarrassing march down the hill and stand on the field portion. You're welcome to if you want, um, for anyone who wants to be in the limelight. But I, oftentimes we had more first responders in the bleachers than we had on the field. So we're removing that aspect of it. We do want to thank the Putnam, Putnam Valley Volunteer Fire Department, who will send their color guard. So they will uh, march onto the field, um, display the colors and we'll do the national anthem. We have a student uh, signed up, ready to sing the national anthem. We're going to read a nice message to our first responders. They don't have to go anywhere, just simply ask them to stand to be recognized in the bleachers or standing along the fence line where they may be. Uh, I know we are a community full of them. It doesn't matter whether you live here or you serve here or both. Um, if you are a first responder, please come out and let us thank you for the service you provide to whatever community you provide that service. And we're hopeful maybe another special guest will show up. Uh, our high school has their IB information evening on Tuesday, October twenty-first. That's immediately before the board meeting. So for all those out in the board meeting crowd, please make sure to show up an hour early so you can do your IB information evening first and then come to the board meeting following. And I know some of the board members, unfortunately, I'm unable to, but some of the board members will be attending the New York State School Board Association Convention in New York City, October twenty-third to the twenty-fifth. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we're going to start on new business. Um, I have to say before we do the first eight, that it makes me sad to see eight retirements, but I also think that that's part of the growth process of a district. So we'll go through them and, but know that everybody that leaves the district through retirement will be missed.
Yep, without a doubt. And it, I, I, I'm looking at the amount of retirements that we have. Project four or five years into the future because most of the staff in this building will be ready to leave at that time. And that's why the, the CSCA memorandum that we approved at our last meeting, Dr. Luft, I, I, I think that is so well-directed.
Yeah.
We need more instructors. We really do. And young people, if you're listening, I don't know if you are, spread the word, young person. Teaching is a noble uh, profession. It really is. And uh, it's rewarding and we need individuals in that. Okay.
Okay.
Number one, resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Merrillina Corelli from the district for the purpose of retirement effective the close of business on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six is per document sixty-eight slash twenty-six attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Sorry, Sam jumped in before I can. I wanted to echo his thoughts. And rather than doing it after each of these members, I just simply wanted to say the same. It's a tremendous um, loss to the district, these individuals who are leaving. Uh, I couldn't do the math fast enough to figure out the hundreds of years of service they've collectively provided the students of Putnam Valley and the tremendous impact they've had during their time here. So while we'll have an entire year to celebrate them and certainly we'll invite them back for our retiree and tenure reception, I do want to recognize that this will be a huge loss to the district and many, many years of dedicated service has been provided by each.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, the resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Mara Francis Demain from the district for the purposes of retirement effective the close of business on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six as per document number sixty-nine dash twenty-six attached to the agenda and the official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, the resolution passes. Number three, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Barbara Demay from the district for the purpose of retirement effective the close of business on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six as per document number seventy dash twenty, slash twenty-six attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, the resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Wanda Diaz from the district for the purpose of retirement effective the close of business on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six as per document number seventy-one dash twenty-six attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, the resolution passes. Number five, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Denise Halzkowski uh, from the district for the purpose of retirement effective the close of business on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six as per document seventy-two slash twenty-six attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I have a question. What school and position was she? It just wasn't listed in the.
Middle school. Reading.
Middle school reading. Thank you.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, the resolution passes. Number six, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Elizabeth McCormack from the district for the purpose of retirement effective the close of business on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six as per document number seventy-three dash twenty-six attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, the resolution passes. Numbers, what are we on? Seven?
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Susan Maloney from the district for the purpose of retirement effective the close of business on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six as per document number seventy-four slash twenty-six attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, the resolution passes. Number eight, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Barbara Wayland from the district for the purpose of retirement effective the close of business on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six as per document number seventy-five dash twenty-six attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, the resolution passes. Before we go on to nine, I have to say, looking at the names, um, some of them taught my children who are now forty and forty-three. Um, but all, a lot of those names are what I would consider district leaders. I see them on, serving on committees and in other places. And so like Dr. Luft and Sam, you said also, it will be a loss for the district, but it will also allow new people to step into those leadership roles. So um, sad, but. to step into those leadership roles, so sad, but growth can be painful. Number nine, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to amend the appointments of ENL teacher Liliana Castanzo, approved at the Board of Education meetings of September 11, 2025, and May 6, 2025, as follows. Appoint Liliana Castanzo to a four-year probationary term as an ENL teacher commencing on September 26, 2025, and terminating on September 25, 2029, in a 10-year area of ESOL, at the middle school on Step 1 Masters of the PVFT salary schedule. Ms. Castanzo holds English to speakers of other languages, initial certification.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Liliana's been with us since the beginning of the school year, she was awaiting New York State issuance of her certification, having come from another state, so this resolution just marks the beginning of her probationary period when her certification was officially awarded by the state. But she's not a new teacher, she's been here since the beginning of the year, in fact, she was hired last school year, so she was able to participate in all our new employer orientation and superintendents conference days, so not new to us, just an updated resolution.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the resolution passes, number 10, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to rescind the appointment approved at the Board of Education meeting of September 11, 2025, of Alexandra Arenas as a Spanish leave replacement teacher in the district.
Second.
Questions or comments?
If you speak Spanish and never thought about a career in education, please reach out.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the resolution passes, number 11, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the first reading of updates and a new policy, Policy 0111, sexual harassment guidelines under Title IX, including exhibit and regulation, to Policy Series 0000, philosophy goals and objectives, as per Document Number 82/26 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the resolution passes, number 12, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve a letter of intent with the National Fitness Campaign for receipt of a 2026 NFC-MVP Healthy Schools Grant for $60,000, as per Document Number 80-26 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the resolution passes, number 13.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to adopt the 2025-26 school year district goal of resiliency.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Do we want to read the goal?
Yeah, can we?
I can read it.
Yeah, would you read it?
Resiliency, the district will cultivate resilience in both students and staff by creating supportive environments that value perseverance, adaptability, and continuous growth. By fostering a culture of resilience, our district will ensure that all members of our learning community are prepared to navigate adversity, embrace new opportunities, and thrive academically, professionally, and personally.
I love that.
Thank you, I think that's really very well-written.
Very well-written.
AI help?
In the chat, GPT.
I wish it was that easy. There was some significant wordsmithing from my draft version that I had to get through our administrative team to what was the final version, so it was certainly a team effort amongst many individuals.
Well done.
Well, and to understand that you cannot grow without failure, and you have to be able, it's what you do with that, to move forward is what makes you who you are, and also which allows you to be successful, so, you know, perseverance, adaptability, continuous growth, like those are such key things, and if our staff and our students can learn that, we've been successful, so never mind the test, it's safe.
I agree.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the resolution passes. I'm going to open it up to public comment on any topic? No? Upcoming meetings, topics, and presentations, I know we're anxiously awaiting the high school presentation.
So our next board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 21st, that'll be our opening of schools update for the high school, and our student board reps are very excited for it, and November 13th will be our next board meeting, and that'll be our Buildings and Grounds update.
I know you said that, but just to stress, it's Tuesday.
Tuesday, October 21st.
Did we do that because of the convention? Okay, thank you.
I do want to recognize, from the yes at the end of the table, I do want to welcome back my, my right and left hand, Maureen, who was kind enough to come back and continue her dedicated service to the Putnam Valley School District.
Stay.
Please.
Thank you, Maureen.
Welcome home.
I almost forgot to thank you back, because I felt like you never left. It was just how natural.
All right, board member comments, first of all, the town hall meeting, I don't have my calendar, but I think it's the third Wednesday, right?
Sasha, I think is next to do it.
The 15?
Yeah. I'll get you a list of topics.
Okay, one would be the grant.
Yes?
Looks good right now.
Okay, well, if you can't, let one of us know, and we'll fill in for you.
All right, my son is going into playoffs next week for baseball, which would be my only concern, but I will try to keep it open.
Let us know. One of us can do it.
Yeah, let us know, we'll cover for you.
If he does not have a baseball game, I have absolutely nothing else, that would prohibit me from being there.
It's like six, right, Sam?
Yeah, at six, you need to, that's when they start doing the presentations, yep.
Okay, I also know you saw Maureen's note about Veterans Day, I did get a wreath, and she responded that the school district would be presenting a wreath, I know Sam and I will be there, but anybody else that's free on Veterans Day, you're welcome to join us. The only other thing is, we had, West Putte scheduled a meeting with, or NISBA scheduled a meeting with our state representative, Matt Lawler, last week that I attended, he unfortunately was not there.
I knew it.
But the, his assistant.
What's that?
Inner voice. But the, his assistant, who deals with educational issues, was there, and she was very knowledgeable. It's not, it's not the same, but she was very knowledgeable. We talked a lot about supporting, support for public schools, student well-being, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, and where it stands, you know, nowadays, career and technical education, we talked about, the educator workforce, and Title I funding, so we covered a lot of issues, she took really good notes, so I just want you to know that, you know, like, they know we're, they know we're here, and I'll be voting this next Friday, or Thursday, whatever, anyway, for the NISBA meeting. Okay, any other board comments? Crystal, I know you said you've been to one building steering middle school, but you have, but you're on the other two.
I am on the other two, the high school had their first one very early, and I just didn't have the date, so I wasn't able to attend that one, but I will be at the next high school one, and I will be at the elementary one in November. The middle school one was great, as we discussed, lots of people, which was wonderful to see, and we predominantly talked about transition to middle school and the structure of back-to-school night, so that'll probably be the next conversation continued. And then, what's really nice about it is that Ms. Zeca really stressed the parents and the community members that are on that committee, leading it, and really steering what happens at the steering committee, so that was great.
Excellent.
While we're here, I just wanted to mention that the high school back-to-school night last night was absolutely phenomenal.
It was.
It was extremely well-structured, I know that these people worked all day and they were exhausted, but they kept their energy up until that last period, it was just really wonderful to see everybody so engaged, the kids were here doing their club stuff, which was always, you know, is always great to see, and we got the information that we needed in a very timely fashion, so I appreciated that very much. And just lastly, it looks like our retire, our retirements this year are pretty spread out throughout the district, we have two speech pathologists retiring, so I'm just wondering about what the plan might be to figure that out for going forward, because they're really hard to find, especially good ones. And then, like Sam mentioned, just thinking forward about the amount of retirees we're gonna have from the high school in the future, and what the plan is for that, so that we don't have an entirely new high school in five years, because that would be really hard to retrain everybody in IB.
We'll bring back Ray Cooper to do the training.
I don't think he'll come, to be perfectly honest.
So all very valid points, certainly something, in fact, we're already having meetings projecting and looking ahead towards what's really five, six years away, for the most part, when we start to see large numbers of high school teachers reaching that retirement age, and again, it doesn't mean that they'll all go at once, but we're certainly planning ahead for that possibility. Regarding the speech-language pathologist, as we always do, we'll certainly post early, we're lucky to be a very attractive district to many, so I'm sure we'll get some highly-qualified candidates that are, that would love to come here and take on those positions. And as for the other positions, as we always do, we'll explore the necessity of filling, or whether we can eliminate it through attrition, and if the decision is made that we must fill the position, then we'll start that search process early and make sure we get qualified candidates while they're still available.
Excellent. Just a couple of things, looking at the retirements, quite a few of the individuals, I was on the committee that hired Mary Fran for a librarian at the time, Liz McCormick, Wanda Diaz, my God, and I can never get my head around the passage of time, that's the most baffling thing for me, because you wake up one day and like 30 years have passed, and you go, what? But anyway, I wanna, I wanna give kudos to the Ninth Show, that's a TV program that's put on by the seniors. I love that thing.
Good job, Jen.
I, I loved it, the first episode and the second, it's incredible, it's so creative. You were gonna say something, Sasha, go ahead, yeah.
So, we, Maureen said it, it's the first time I've seen it, there's several, there's 15 seasons, I mean, it's, so right now it's 15, it's season 15, episode 2, so I have only seen the first one, I'm shocked that I haven't heard of it before, I wish we would show our community, it's so good. It's these students from, I guess, 10th grade, 11th grade, and 12th grade, they stand, and they're interviewing each other, this particular one was talking about people standing and being in the way, in the hallway, and then talking about the blood drive and why it's important, I mean, it was just like, so, like, we always say, oh, I want to hear the students, like, we should play that, it's so, it was so good, I was watching it, and I was like, I think that we should post it to the community, they were looking for more viewers, and I really think it's just such a great thing, it's for our film students, it shows like what they do in class, and how they're making like real-life productions, I mean, I thought it was fantastic.
You run this, Dan? It is, it is yours, yeah, I thought so, it's outstanding, I love the one with the parking lot, doing the spaces and getting comments on those, I mean, everything, it really is neat.
And Dan, I love your response regarding the computers, why the juniors and seniors didn't get the new computers, and you answered it correctly, so.
Can we find out if we're allowed to share those videos on social media?
We can?
Yeah, we also have our own Ninth Show.
Oh, that's true, you do, yeah.
You have your own?
Yeah, right, it's on the website, yeah.
I'm telling you, that website is a pit, it's so lost, it's amazing, there's so much information, yes, I know, I need to like spend like days looking through it, there's so much great information on it. I just wanted to say to Dr. Luft, I've spoken to him about it tons and tons of times, I really appreciate you looking at the necessity of hiring teachers back, so I know that I brought it up before, we're losing to middle school, like, English, what do you call them? Reading? Reading teachers, and I had asked if, what the need was, and you had said that you're going to look it over and make sure that the necessity is there to hire too, and I just really appreciate that.
Agreed.
And, you know, you looking out for our district, and where we could spend our money best in terms of teachers, so I just appreciate that. And the Ninth Show.
Can I ask you, have you seen the Ninth Show, or are you part of it?
I'm not a part of it, but I've seen it, Mr. Mahoney posts it on the class page, is that, the Google Classroom, so he posts it whenever they, I don't know if it's weekly, yeah, every two weeks, and then it's posted, and I've watched it sometimes, yeah.
Good.
It's entertaining, yeah. They make it very funny, and like, they include everyone, it's great.
It reminds me of Monty Python, or, for those who are as old as I am, the old laughing, remember that, with all the skits and stuff, one right after the other, it's great, it really is.
You should show them our video, and then they'll appreciate there's much more.
They've seen some of your videos.
They follow the what not to do.
Anything else, Jeanette? You good? Okay, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, be safe.
Good night, everybody.